You can hear us now. Oh, good. Thank you. All right.
Do you want us to repeat what we said then, or how that everyone can hear it?
Yes. Why don't we go and do that? That'd be fine. But Jenny, go ahead and you're there. Go ahead and be yours, and then we'll go back to the other two.
I'll be brief. But Jenny Branniger, 8451 Marshall Road. I guess I'm going to concur with my other family members in asking that you deny this. I know that, you know, we've been in business for over 100 years. We're a known entity. We're a little bit concerned about the unknown entity, and I really respectfully would like to ask the board to help me understand how you think a 600-unit small village is going to be able to coexist next to a livestock operation. I understand that this question was posed to the township committee in the last meeting, and somebody said, you know, Michigan's a right-to-farm state. We absolutely understand Michigan's a right-to-farm state. It doesn't prevent our neighbors, the right to complain, the right to sue, the right to request that maybe we don't haul manure on a day that they may be having an outdoor barbecue, or the assisted living facility has an open house. So I really would like you guys to think about how we, who are going to be implicated by this decision you're making, really will be able to coexist with all these new neighbors right next door to our operation. You know, it's a concern that we'll be dealing with in the long term, and we would like to remain able to farm here. But this adds a real serious dimension to how we can run our operation. So I really would like you guys to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to repeat what you said.
All right. Round two. All right.
This is the dress rehearsal.
Yep. I'm asking the planning commission to deny Heritage Woods on the basis of poor location and lack of planning. Here are a few questions. Does the planning commission want agriculture in the township long-term? If so, why would you rezon this, and how would rezoning this property contribute to the future of agriculture here? Why are we considering the rezoning of ag land when we have residential land for the same use? Why are we proposing a senior living facility less than a mile away from another one that will be on Jackson Road that was passed February of 2021? And in 2008, Scioto Township's largest land preservation was completed on 173 acres of farmlands and woods right next to this proposed development. So what would be the incentive for anyone to preserve their land after something like this? Please consider these points before making your decision. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Branniger, and I reside at 8451 Marshall Road, which is directly west of the proposed Heritage Woods development. I would respectfully urge a no vote on the Heritage Woods PUD. The development does not follow the township's current master plan. Residents of Scioto Township have voted to keep green space and farmland by twice approving a millage for the purchase of development rights by a two-to-one margin. I would hope that you as a planning commission will listen to your constituents and deny this proposal. Contrary to what some might say, this does set a precedent for future development. How many developments are in the works of the township presently? How many services are required by green space or working farms as compared to developments? I fear that allowing this development could start a domino effect on developing the remaining farmland and green space in the township. Contrary to what the developer says, this PUD will negatively impact my family business and livelihood. Is the township willing to make accommodations to our farms so that we can remain and earn our living? Where do you draw the line? Thank you.
Hello. I'm Beth Chamberlain, and I live at 1701 Baker Road, Dexter there. And I'm not really sure how you guys have figured this spot out. When you go down there, you're going to be between Larry Wagner's and this guy's house. There's nowhere for these people to go, first of all. What about going on the other side of Jax? Now, well, of course, that's, I think, where the new one's going to go. But again, do we really need two of them in that same location? And really, to preserve the lands, we spend all this money on preserving these lands. And yet, what was the point in doing all that property on Marshall Road? Was there really a purpose in that when you're going to re say, okay, never mind, we're going to let this be whatever it wants to be? I mean, I personally cannot get out of my driveway in the mornings. I literally, my kids were taught, they were never to leave my driveway unless they were turning right. They had to go down Marshall Road and up to the school. Because you cannot make a left turn out of my driveway. There's no way, unless you have your foot on the gas. And I just, the whole development, it's just like, I don't know, I don't think everybody's looking at what we had in a master plan at one time. And I really think they, you know, you're going to run out one of the only dairy farms left in Dexter? I mean, I'm pretty sure they, are you guys the only ones in Dexter?
Yeah.
The only, the only one, where the little kids can go by and say, oh, there's a little, a little cow. No, that's not a cow, that's a calf. The cow's the mama, and the daddy's a steer. You know, what, you know, why do we want to push out the beauty of this? And then, how about them? What if they want to sell all their property and develop all that kind of, you know, it's not a win-win for nobody. It's not a location. I mean, get off the highway. Where are they going to go? Do you zip across the road and hope you make it? I mean, it's just, it's crazy. And all them trucks, all them, every day in the wintertime, there's a truck stuck there, or, you know, I mean, it's, I just, and who wants to be in that corner? That's a beautiful piece of property. That needs to stay a beautiful piece of property. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room?
Good evening. I'm Marty Kepanowski. I live at 8856 Dexter Chelsea Road. And you've heard from the family who has this property being affected, and I just wanted to know there's, you know, other people in the community, too. I don't live next to them. I'm not part of the family. But I live in this area because I like the rural nature of it. Washington County and various townships have voted for lots of millages, as was said earlier, to purchase open land and preserve farmland. It's because that's what the people want. You know, Zeke mentioned about, do you want agriculture? Does the, I think his words were, does the commission want agriculture long-term in the county and or in the township? But really, you know, the commission should be serving the constituents. I'm representing the constituents, you know, at least in my view, some of the constituents that we do want rural and farmland preserved. That's part of what's wanted here. And then Bruce mentioned something about, you know, about, you know, the constituency again. And then that's what you're representing is the desires of the constituents, of people who live here who like the rural community. There's plenty of places to live in cities and crowded downtown areas. If anyone wants to do that, they can go there. But this is rural. That's why people live here. That's why they vote for these millages, to purchase farmland and preserve it. People want that here. That's what people want. They don't want giant developments where there's going to be thousands of cars coming and going, which there's no way anyone can, no way anyone can deny. You go and put 600 people there, it's going to spawn other developments, and strip malls and things like that. That's not what the people who live here want. And I just wanted to speak in support of the Brannigers, and at least, you know, myself, and I know some other people who are residents. And I'll take a minute to say my name.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to address the planning commission? Who's in the room? All right, then move to folks online. And if you could indicate you want to address us in public comment, that would be anything that is not the public hearing tonight. Please raise your hand.
At this time, I do not see anyone raising their hand for public comment. That's not in the room. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. We do have one person that's hand just rose. Kristin Kowalski, let me, Kristin Kowalski, please turn, unmute yourself, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I currently own two pieces of property on Marshall Road myself. One is adjacent to Branniger Farms. I was formerly a Branniger. And the other near Marshall Road. And one thing you guys need to take into consideration is some of that wildlife there, too. You know, you have a pair of nesting protected eagles. It's right across the road from where your proposal is going in. So you might want to look into that as well. But I am asking you to please not put this in because you are taking away from the beauty and the wildlife and my family's way of living since 1900. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kristin, now, we do have a couple of their hands, or one other hand up here. Pam Boyd. Pam, I just clicked you in. So if you could unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to apologize to the residents and to the commission for my interruption of your meeting moments ago. And thank you for turning on the volume so we, outside the township hall, can hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam, for letting us know.
Can I add my comments also? Just one more quick thing. What was the question?
If he could append his comments.
Just wanted to say one more thing. Marty Kepanowski again, that I didn't mention. I mentioned rural, and I mentioned what everybody wants. But I also wanted to say that my kids grew up with Zeke and, you know, watched him go through 4-H, and, you know, probably Future Farmers of America. And, you know, he wants to take over this farm. And I think that's something the commission needs to really consider, too. They mentioned it was 100 years in the family, and it wants to continue being in the family. And, you know, putting in a project like is being proposed is going to put a huge, huge strain on Zeke's ability to continue that family farm. We really feel for him. Thank you.
And I am looking at the, we have 12 attendees. No one else is raising their hand. So I'll give you a moment to, oh, we got another hand, one hand raised. Sarah Bruniger. Sarah, I clicked you in, unmute, and you have the floor.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Great. I just, I'll keep it short. But I just wanted to say that it might seem small, maybe to want to preserve a farm as opposed to like adding 600 people to your township. But I think it's the reason that people live in Dexter, and I think it's very important to preserve areas like this because they're becoming more and more rare, especially as all the areas get built up around. Would it be nice to build Dexter as a place that has been sort of left out of those developing areas and can be a place where people can connect with nature? We already have like the B2B trail. We have Hudson Mills. But like, I think it would be a huge benefit to keep areas like that around. So even though you might not be drawing in all the 600 seniors, you would be attracting tourists still. People come from outside areas to spend their money because Dexter is staying rural. And I think that would be really important. I mean, I'd like to echo everything everyone else said. Obviously, I grew up on that farm, and I would love to keep it the way that it is. I would be devastated if something like this were to affect my family's way of life. But that's already been said. I just wanted to point out that, like, the reason people like Dexter is because it's rural. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not see any other hands up. We'll give everyone a moment to adjust their computers if they'd like to speak.
Do we have anyone joining by phone?
Have no one joining by phone. We have, I'm going to lower all hands because some have been up since I started. So if you would like to speak again, raise your hand. I didn't mean to take your hand down, but sometimes I can't tell if it's, it's been up there since we started. Okay, Kristin Kowalski, who spoke once already, would like to address us again. So Kristin Kowalski, you have the floor. Okay.
Can you hear me now okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. One of my concerns is also for the potential residents that might move into such a facility as this. You're talking about a three-story building with seniors. And what happens when there's a fire? You're not supposed to go on elevators. You have a lot of older people. How are they going to get out safely? And also, there are so many staffing shortages in these type of facilities. When my dad was in one, we couldn't get him to see a doctor for like three days. There is not the support there even for the residents to live there. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I see no other hands for public comment.
All right, then, we'll.
I move to close public hearing. Comment?
Public comment.
Do I comment?
Support, support. Commissioner Hyde and Commissioner Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we're closing public comment at 7:26. Right. Next is our business session, and we have one advertised public hearing. It's CU 22001 PSP, 22001 Wolverine Pickleball. It's on a piece of vacant land, and it's for conditional use. So I will declare this public hearing open. And again, the same rules apply to the public hearing comment from the public, is three minutes for an individual, five minutes for an organization. And this public comment is just to address the conditional use of Wolverine Pickleball. So is there anyone in the room that would like to address the planning commission on Wolverine Pickleball? Online. Oh, you know what? I forgot. Stop. We need to do the petitioner first, and then any comment, and then public comment. So, thank you. So, so who's here? I'm sorry.
I'm on Zoom. Kristy, representing Wolverine Pickleball.
Great. Thank you.
I think you have a speaker. Whoever's speaking gets their camera.
All right. Yep. So please go ahead.
Hi. Okay, great. I'm Kristy with Wolverine Pickleball. We are petitioning to have a conditional use on the land where we plan to build our pickleball facility so that we could add restaurant with standard liquor, to have a license there to serve beverages for socialization after pickleball and volleyball and bocce ball. We're looking forward to bringing more leisure to the community. And with Pickleball, we have a wonderful community that I think will enhance the Scioto Township, allowing for lingering and mingling. And that's why we'd like to get the, have the ability to serve alcohol at our facility.
Is there any, okay, so that was the applicant. Is there anyone else that is part of the applicant's group that wants to speak? All right, then we'll go to Carlisle Wortman.
Okay, thank you.
And do speak up pretty loudly.
Yeah, I'll try to speak louder. I'll try to switch this camera, too. I don't know if that helps. Nope, that doesn't help. I'm off to the side, so imagine me talking. Yeah, it's a double one with Carlisle Wortman Associates. I will try to adjust the camera in a moment. So this is a, just for those listening at home or watching at home, and those folks that might still be here in the audience, the applicant is requesting a indoor commercial recreation with restaurant in the C4 zoning district. So those uses are conditional use within the C4, which is composite commercial. And as you might remember, the applicant received a rezoning of this property relatively recently, within the last few months, from I-1 limited industrial to C4 composite commercial, with the understanding that they had to go through this step. the understanding that they had to go through this step next, and that would be the conditional use step, to try to get the indoor commercial recreation use permitted, and in this case, it's going to be to build a facility to have both indoor pickleball courts, outdoor pickleball courts, I believe bocce ball, and a restaurant, you know, or something serving food. The applicant can probably expand upon the scope of the restaurant, but it's our understanding that they also are, have requested a liquor license from Siouxs Township. So, in this particular case, we are looking tonight at the use of the land and some of the site plan elements that have to do with the use, but just understand that if the planning commission recommends approval of the conditional use, which would allow those things that I just mentioned, the applicant still has to come back before us for a final site plan. So there's another step after this where the site plan will have to come in, you know, very detailed site plan showing stormwater detention, you know, full landscape plan and all that sort of thing. This particular site, for those in the audience that might not be aware of it, is on Medi Drive, directly north of the Ann Arbor Arms site, on the same side of the road as the Ann Arbor Arms site, and so they are requesting to use that vacant property to build this facility. Incidentally, the applicant is currently operating in Siouxs Township off of Jackson Plaza Road, which is where the old subway used to be, if you know where that is, where the old subway used to be, in a, in an, in a, what was in a vacant industrial building, and they are, so they're currently in operation, and I believe successful. They would like, that was always thought of as a temporary location, and so they're looking for their permanent home, and that permanent home, they hope to make that permanent home on Medi Drive. So as you can see from our report, we talked about the rezoning that occurred some months ago, and the, some of the conditions that they placed upon themselves. We talk about the land, the surrounding land use, and as I described, the surrounding land use is, you know, to the south is a, in essence, another industrial slash indoor commercial or indoor commercial recreation site, and that's the Ann Arbor Arms site. North of that is some vacant property, and then north of that on Medi is a small industrial facility with a number of industrial and office buildings. There are really no residences within close proximity to this site. So we have really, we have no issue, as you can see in our report on page three, with regard to the land use and the zoning of what the applicant is proposing. I'll also mention that at one time, and the applicant can expand upon this, Wolverine Pickleball folks already actually received a conditional use approval on this exact site for the same use without the outdoor recreation component. So back when this property was still zoned I-1 limited industrial, we do allow indoor commercial recreation in the I-1 limited industrial, so they've already gone through this entire process for this site. What they want to do now is introduce an outdoor commercial recreation component in addition to the indoor commercial recreation component. The outdoor commercial recreation component is really what's driving this, this request tonight, and if the planning commission remembers, that's the reason why they had to get the rezoning to C4, because C4 is the only zoning district we have that allows outdoor commercial recreation. So they've been through that, it's properly zoned now, now they're requesting the use. The, we have no issue with the current master plan. The master plan calls for... Comments or thoughts on that at this point? The site is vacant, basically lawn area at this point. It's, you know, it's a vacant industrial site that was really set up for an industrial or office building at some time in the future, you know, sometime in the future. So there's really no significant natural features that we find on the site. It is located within Township Sewer and Water District, so that will be good if the applicant is able to move forward with the restaurant that they're talking about. There are six standards that the planning commission has to address with regard to the conditional land use. This is one of those uses that we call a discretionary, has some sort of, somewhat of discretionary approval, in that the township has the authority to deny a conditional use. It's a discretionary land use if the applicant can't meet the conditional use standards that are listed in our report on page four and five, one through six. All of those standards primarily have to do with how the site will impact, how the site will impact the adjacent neighbors, the township as a whole, and the future uses of the property in the neighborhood. So all six of those kind of get down to, will this site cause a negative impact in this location? They say it in a lot more words than that, but that's really what we're trying to get to. So that's, that's really what the planning commission should be thinking about, is will an outdoor commercial recreation facility at this location cause a negative impact to Siouls Township in some way? We went through these standards. Generally, we think that applicant has addressed them in their application material. We don't have any real outstanding issues on our end, but of course, the planning commission also has to make a determination and have discussion about that. At this time, the applicant is not requesting any variances, and we do mention there, we have a site plan review section here. The site plan review will really occur at the final, at this next stage of review. Again, not right, tonight, we're primarily talking about the use. Is the use okay in this location? And if it moves on to the next stage, we've got some general comments here about parking and loading that will have to be addressed. So our recommendation, based on the information provided by the applicant, and in the comments of this analysis, the following items will need to be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission prior to making a recommendation of Wolverine Pickleball, conditional land use, Medi Drive to the Township Board. And we just have one item, and that is that the applicant provide some additional information on the hours of operation, number of employees, and if any tournaments will be scheduled, and all of those things have to do with, you know, how much parking they have, and if that, if those kinds of, if those kinds of items would be disruptive to Medi Drive and/or the existing property owners in that area. So, again, how many employees? Are they going to have tournaments? What are they, you know, what are they, what are they anticipating as kind of worst-case scenario so that we can try to address, address those issues? One other thing, it's good to know, the planning commission has the ability to make conditions with a conditional land use. Those conditions don't necessarily have to be agreed upon by the applicant, but those conditions are supposed to reflect the six standards of conditional land use approval. We just can't make, you know, a condition that has no relationship to the zoning ordinance, but you certainly can, that's, that's the benefit of this discretionary approval, is that the planning commission has the ability to add conditions if you, if you think those conditions can help the request meet the conditional, the six conditional land use standards. So we just have one item to address. Again, we were pretty familiar with the request, being that they've already requested an indoor commercial recreation facility at the site, which was approved a couple of years ago. They've also requested C4 zoning, which we granted, so I think we're all relatively familiar with the project. So we're just down to a couple of real minor things, well, not minor, but some things that the applicant should really address prior to this, moving on to the final site plan stage. And then other, also for those that might be interested at home, this planning commission is only a recommending body, so this will, regardless of what the planning commission does this evening, whether you recommend approval, or denial, or approval with conditions, it would go on to the Township Board. Even if, even if the planning commission would recommend denial, it would go on to the Township Board with that recommendation. So the, the elected officials in Siouls Township have the final say in this type of approval. So, that is it, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions that anybody has about the process and where we're at.
So, are these questions to Carlisle Wartman?
It is not for Carlisle Wartman. It was to see if the applicant would like to address the issue, the sole issue that Carlisle Wartman brought up. Perhaps they're ready to answer.
Yeah. I just want to check in with OHM just to see if they had any comments, and then I think it would be appropriate to ask the applicant to address the operating hours, number of employees, you know, the idea of tournaments and so forth. OHM, do you have, I think I saw Stacy, do you have any comments? This is a conditional use, so it would just be around the adequate public facilities, and I think there wasn't anything in the report that indicated that it was, that there were any issues that you had.
Correct. We didn't have any issues. Based on our preliminary review, it appears to be compatible with the existing infrastructure, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you've got anything for me, but we recommended approval for the conditional use in our February 2nd letter.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll go back to the applicant then, if he'd like to address, because if there's anyone that, anyone from the public, I think they'd be interested in the operating hours, number of employees, and sort of the tournament, anticipated tournament.
I'm happy to address that. So, to the tournament aspect, that's not a core element of our business. We do plan to run some tournaments. We would coordinate that with, like, our neighbors if we need additional parking, but we are known for our tournaments of running them in segments so that we can turn people out, so that they're not lingering for a long time that they play, you know, finish up a tournament, and then move on to the next wave. So we feel like we're addressing that with time delays in between it, and feel we can handle that. Our hours of operation would probably start out within 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and extend as necessary, you know, by demand to add a bit longer hours. For the number of employees, for running the pickleball, it only take a couple of employees during the day. In the evenings or when it's busier times, we anticipate four to five employees, just because we have a nice system of getting people going and playing. It's similar to a tennis club in that way, is how we plan to address that.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, that's proper.
Do you plan to serve liquor outdoors, or have people drinking outdoors?
We, we do, we would allow people to go out into a space that we have kind of designated so that they could watch and participate in bocce ball, or watch sand volleyball going on. They could take their drink or food out into that space. It would be kind of self-contained. We have some fencing, a little bit planned in the site plan.
Thank you. All right, any other, like, just sort of clarifications?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. You said four to five employees for pickleball, but that's not including the restaurant and the bar service, so how many total employees would be on site?
So, so for the restaurant and food, we plan to do food trucks, and then to have, so that would be on a rotating basis, and then we would also have the, kind of the fancy vending machines, where there an RFID, which would be stocked by local restaurants, so that people can kind of self-serve for sandwiches, salads, yogurt parfaits, or whatever, that would be their option. And then the alcohol, we would, that would actually be a new process that's kind of going through the system right now, the Michigan Legislature, about the self-serve beer tap walls, where you, where it's a controlled process with some RFID's. It's, it's something new. It's gone across the country. Michigan's one of the later states to adopt it. Governor Whitmer has already said she's approving of it, and it's going through the regulatory thing, but it's kind of a self-serve process where we're just, I just need staff members to ID clients and kind of monitor it that way.
And then, just one other follow-up question. You said you were going to have tournaments, and you may have overflow parking. Have you met with the neighbors to request permission in writing that you can use some of their spaces when you're having these tournaments?
Yes, we, we're already in discussions with our neighbor directly across. We have our parking, our driveways lined up, so we could make it easy access, would be like Heinz, the manufacturing across the street, if we, if we do need parking. We've planned extra in our lot already, so we'd be very conscious of that. We don't want to have parking issues just for the safety of the area and flow of traffic. But, but again, tournaments are not a core to our business, so it would, there might be four in a year, and we would, and a lot of times that comes with people coming out of town, and we would work with local hotels for, for shuttles and things like that.
Yeah, Commissioner Shawna?
What is the capacity of this facility? Maybe I missed it when you were speaking, but how many customers and how many employees was the maximum capacity?
Well, the maximum that would be playing, because it's a very large space, it's like 38,000 square feet, so technically you could fit a lot of people in there, but we will be using it for pickleball, the, you know, majority of it. So we have 12 courts, so that would be like four people playing on a court, so that's like 48 people, and then we have seating for about another 50 people, and then with employees. So you're looking at around 100 people could really be in the space at a time.
And your parking structure would be designed on?
We have the parking designed for 132 spots. 132.
And what about the, I mean, if you were also actively doing things outdoors, what would that add to that?
Well, the outdoor component is kind of to offset during the summer, so that would only be a short time, because we know that, just with our experience running our business, the pickleball goes down, people don't want to be inside as much, so we expect that to go down, and the outdoors would increase, and it would be about the same capacity, just with the number of courts and people that play at a time. So we feel it's a good balance.
So I, what I'd like to do is open it up to the public at this point. Do we have any, do we have anyone in the room that would like to address the planning commission about the pickleball? Then we'll go online. If we have anyone who would like to address this.
Anyone who would, we still have 10 attendees, so if anyone would like to address the planning commission, please raise your hand. There are none raising their hand.
If we wait just a little bit, just to make sure, and then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, there still are none.
Okay. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing for additional use for Wolverine Pickleball.
I would move to close the public hearing.
By Commissioner Hyde, support by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion?
Let me, can I make one clarification?
Yeah.
So the, the conditional land use in this case, I misspoke, it is actually just for the restaurant and bar.
So it's food service and alcohol, because the outdoor was...
Indoor, indoor commercial recreation, outdoor commercial recreation are actually permitted uses in the C4, in the C4 district. So we are talking about their desire to serve food and have liquor.
That's an important clarification, thanks. That's an important clarification, thanks. Then we'll have our discussion, yeah. All right, so we had, let's see, we had a motion. I'll just make, any further discussion and we'll revote just because?
On the motion.
Yeah, on the motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. And with that, we'll open up discussion. Commissioner Hyde?
I did have a question about the liquor license because this is something that I have not personally addressed before. So beyond our recommendations here at the planning commission, we go to the board trustees, is there another component to a liquor license separate, going through parallel discussions?
Yes. Yep, there is a, there is a parallel, as you said, parallel process that they have already applied for that will not come to the planning commission. It goes, that's a township board action.
And that would discuss the methods and the, I'm not quite sure, what approvals or what points of discussion that that has, what hurdles that has to go through. I'm not familiar with that. Do we need to address any of that here? Or is it just a matter of do we think that serving liquor in this location is appropriate or not?
Yeah, it's more the latter.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, there's a checklist that we've actually, we're assisting the township board in reviewing this request.
And just to kind of follow up on that a little bit. I guess with the conditional use, if we say, yep, it's okay, a restaurant and alcohol service, does that mean if all of a sudden pickleball tanks, a restaurant serving, you know, a full-fledged restaurant and entity serving alcohol would be able to use this conditional use? Or is it more specific to what they've stated as their business plan?
It would, it would run with the land, but it would be specific to their request. So if someone came in and tried to convert the whole building to a restaurant bar, that would be very different than multiple pickleball courts, you know, inside the building. Mostly what's inside the building is courts. And if the whole thing was converted to tables and chairs and bar, that would be quite a, you know, a increase to the special land use. We're granting a pretty specific special land use request. Yes, it's allowing a restaurant and serving, what does it say? Restaurants and establishments that serve alcohol. However, it has, it's based on the plan that they've submitted to us.
So the conditional use would run with the land. And how are you qualifying that?
It also, it runs with the land, but would also be based on the plan that they've submitted to us.
Based on the pickleball Wolverine property?
Yes, yes.
So if someone else owns the property and they wanted to put a bar grill in there, the conditional use would not apply?
They would have to come back to us for like an, for an expansion of that special land use.
How do we know or how would the applicant make sure that minors would not be accessing liquor under the self-serve model?
I'm assuming that's part of the licensing.
Yeah. I don't know how they would, I don't know how they operate to be honest. Maybe the applicant can address that.
Cool.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's part of our liquor license application. We will have systems in place. We also don't really cater to minors either. We would have a different station in area for minors to be able to get beverages that are non-alcoholic so that naturally keeps them separate from where the alcoholic beverages are.
Would, could it be appropriate, would it be appropriate to, with the condition, say that they serve alcohol, the service of alcohol and food is supplemental to the recreational use?
Yes.
Something like that?
Good idea.
Same idea.
That the service of alcohol and food service would be supplemental to the recreation use, not just say pickleball, but the recreation use.
I think that would be appropriate, yes.
Well, you could say a bar grill could be recreational. But so could we use something that would really?
The terms in the zoning ordinance are indoor commercial recreation and outdoor commercial recreation. And those are defined terms in bar and restaurant, you know. There's numerous definitions of restaurant in the ordinance also. So if someone tried to say drinking is recreational, that wouldn't be permitted.
Other, time commissioner comments?
Just, I've got a couple. Again, I'm looking at the parcel map. It looks like we did notify the surrounding parcels. Have we heard back from any neighbors who were opposed to the bar restaurant? No?
We've had no, I don't think we've had any correspondence.
Okay. And then I was a little confused with the parcel map. Are they combining that with the three-acre parcel to the north? There's that vacant parcel. So are they combining parcels on this one or is it going to be the separate parcel?
They're actually splitting parcels.
Oh, they're split, okay. So that's the parent parcel and they're going to split off that narrow parcel. Okay, I was just curious.
So actually, we notified probably more than would be required because we went from the edge of the parcel that they won't own. Because right now it's a single parcel. But they eventually will be splitting that parcel.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? Then I think we can entertain a motion. And I just want to remind people that with public hearings, the planning commission may or may not take action depending on the issues that are resolved or unresolved. Someone want to take a?
I did want to make a comment.
Yeah.
But in regard to this facility, I think that this area would suit pickleball in indoor and outdoor recreational use quite nicely. And to add the component of serving alcoholic drinks along with that, doesn't seem to be much of a stretch beyond what a bowling alley does. And where, you know, it's, it's kept separate from the actual courts or lanes in that case. And it's, that would be secondary to the actual sporting event, recreation events. And it gives viewers, visitor, you know, people who are observing the play time to have a drink. So I think this is a good use for the property. And I also think or believe that the applicant has addressed Carlisle Warman's issue of knowing exactly how many employees and how many people would be there. And I think the tournaments go toward that aspect too. And it sounds like the applicant has plans in mind for how to deal with that. And I would think that they would want it to work out and that their plans would go through or they have to be corrected on their own. But those are business plans. The basic concept of the business seems to go.
Other comments from commissioners? Thanks for doing a good summary of that. I concur. So there are any other comments and want to entertain a motion? Commissioner Hyde?
I would suggest a motion for the conditional land use number 22001 for Wolverine pickleball that based on the information supplied by the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township on this date meets the required standards in which, well, and findings for conditional land use and recommend, I recommend approval. Specifically, in summary of section 36224, if I may, I could read all of this, but I find no regular, no negative impact would be in this area of the township by having this use be permitted.
And by implication, are the standards that were in Carlisle Warman's report?
In Carlisle Warman's report dated 2122. I would have, you had?
Yeah.
Commissioner Culberson, you had had a condition you would like to have put on there. And I'm not quite sure I can word it.
Okay, all right, then. That further the planning commission recommends the following condition be placed on the subject conditional land use. That the serving of alcohol and food be supplemental to the recreational use.
Supplemental, that's the word I missed.
Be supplemental to what?
The recreational use. I should, it would be the commercial recreational use technically. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Chang. Further discussion? Then I'll call for a roll call vote.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Sharma?
Yes.
And Commissioner Culberson?
Yes. Great, well, look forward to seeing the site plan. Thank you. Well, hopefully it does go to the township board. But we're assuming that there aren't any real issues there. Okay.
Looks good to class.
All right, then moving on to, we have no unfinished business, moving to new business. And that is site plan 21020EF, I'm sorry, EWF solutions, a mixed use. So we'll start with the applicant.
Let me promote a few people here. Give me a moment while John Stevens. There you go, there's John. So John, is there anyone, if you unmute, is there anyone else that you would like us to promote to panelist?
You can, yes, Ryan Yaple and Jared Time.
One more. Okay, I think all your people are, I think all your people are with us.
All right, well, thanks for having us back. It's been a long journey, but we're excited to be on the home stretch, we think. This is EWF Solutions. We're pretty sure most of you guys are familiar with our project. It's a mixed use, I guess technically a mixed use development. We've partitioned the site to have a commercial out parcel and then a light industrial distribution center, basically in the back of the property, right where Baker Road ends into Jackson Road. Guess I can share my screen. We've been going through back and forth with OHM and Carlisle Warman, making sure that we've got all of our, all the comments and the questions going in the right direction. So I'll let Jared, the civil engineer from Atwell, kind of talk about where we are and, you know, what we have left to accomplish.
Yeah, primarily, you'll see that the site plan is very, very similar to what you saw at the special land use portion of the approval process here. We've taken a few of the comments from Carlisle Warman and added those into the plans, primarily adding in the sidewalk connections up front. And we are working with the adjacent property owner to secure a cross-access easement for emergency services. But primarily it is the same basically outfit that you've all seen and had some feedback on before. So it should be, should look very familiar to you.
I think I'm sharing my screen. I don't, I just wanted to make sure you guys are all seeing it. So that's the, kind of the current site plan as to where we stand today based upon all the comments from OHM and Carlisle Warman, as well as the planning commission and the board of trustees.
John, did you want to touch on any of the architectural comments that had come up at the special land use? How it relates to the Jackson Road overlay district?
So these are, the overall concept of the building hasn't really been deviated since the comments that came back. We, we've worked with the planning commission and the board of trustees to secure this parapet at the front. And since we've done this, the set of drawings, we've actually lowered the roof another foot so that the parapet wraps around and you, you won't see any, anything from either, any of the two sides, the two sides of the driveway in the front. The planning commission granted us not having to put a parapet in the back, back here on the loading dock. So we currently still don't have one there. But some of the improvements that we've been able to make is just really strengthening the materiality. We've got nice brick, we've got a cast stone sill and a nice defined entry here for Ryan and the EWS Solutions. And then the one, the one rendering that really, I guess, and unfortunately Jay's no longer with us, we worked really hard to, to kind of get his approval, was this rendering from Jackson Road. So you really begin to see, our building is set back quite, quite a bit from Jackson Road. And there will be an out parcel which will be a retail component or a commercial component to the site. And what's not rendered in this is the topography. That out parcel site right there would actually be about four feet taller than where, this was just for easability of rendering, just, it would be four foot higher than where it is and then the sidewalk coming back from Jackson Road there, which doesn't really show up, but it's, it's there in the site plan. So we, we think we've kind of begun, or we feel like we've met all the comments and the questions that the planning commission has kind of arisen. Going back to the site plan real quick. Going the wrong way. So we do have that pedestrian connectivity coming in off of Jackson Road now, as well as we still are maintaining a possible pedestrian connection to that, the PUD going next door. And that's something that we anticipate to go through and we would love to be able to work with, with that owner as time, as time goes on. Jared's company is doing the civil engineering for that as well. So we, we anticipate having a connector there as well. And then like Jared said, we are working, we do have cross-access easements with the property owner to the west of us to allow for emergency. And the legal paperwork is being drawn up. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, on that.
Correct. We're currently working on having an easement drawn up and hope to present it to the other property owner later this week.
If I remember, one other item was the, trying to get more of the trees on the site and fewer contributions. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, so after, after the special land use process there, we went back and we took a more detailed look at the trees on the site and have reflected more preservation, limited the grading impacts. limited the, the grading impacts, tried to really preserve as much as possible along the eastern property line. You'll see at the rear end of our building, in the loading dock area there, we, we're preserving the trees basically right up to where the curb line is. And we're going to be enhancing the screening, not, not just from the existing vegetation that we're going to preserve right on that, that line there, but we're going to be placing a six-foot-tall cedar fence right along the curb line there to help screen the loading area from any see-through or the adjacent residential components within the Woodview PUD.
And you've got to keep in mind too, this is a pretty dense existing foliage line going through, and I believe on one of my existing conditions drawings, I, I have photos in there. Yeah, so kind of looking, looking at the existing conditions foliage, we're expecting to keep and maintain as much of that as possible during the construction process. So right back here at number three, this is kind of the mature tree line that we're expecting to preserve as much of as possible and add to as well.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I do have a couple. Now that Jay is not with us, as you noted, he's probably more familiar with the J-Rod standards than I am. And so I would ask for clarification from longer-term personnel than I am. On page, on sheet 52, which was your, the applicant's A300, it lists J-Rod standards, and the very first one says that the buildings will not be more than 75 feet from the greenbelt line. What does that actually mean? Because this is obviously quite a bit more than 75 feet from the greenbelt line.
And I would assume that that would be taken care of because of the outlot, essentially.
Yes, yes. So the outlot will cover that, and if that's the standard way to interpret it, and the J-Rod standards event that way.
Yes, we, we, sorry, it's a hard, hard time hearing who that, who that was. Apologize. We had a meeting with Carlisle Wortman, I believe OHM, Jan and Jay at the time, to kind of go through the J-Rod standards. And so we, we feel pretty comfortable from that meeting that we, we meet the letter of the law of the J-Rod standards. We worked really hard with the materiality and the look of the building and maintaining that front parapet to meet, to meet the letter of the law for the J-Rod standards, so.
Yes, I see. Thank you. And I did see those. I just noted the setback, and I wanted to get clarification. I know I haven't. I had another question, if I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Go on.
The detention basin at the rear, I noted that it's within, I think we noted it before, and I don't recall what the answer was, it's within the 50-foot setback. Is that, and as long as that's allowed, I have no problem, but can you build that close to the, can you build a detention basin that close to the property line? That's my first question. Okay. Do you have to put fencing around it? Because we're having...
No, we, we do not need to place fencing around the detention pond. The, the standards for Washtenaw County per the Water Resource Commission specifies the slope criteria for the pond, which we are meeting. And you only are required to fence the pond for safety purposes if you are exceeding those side slope requirements. And we are meeting the standards, so no fencing is required.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and just incidentally, Commissioner Hyde, Stacy Surder from, OHM is on, and she would review that also. I don't know if Stacy wants to comment on that.
And yeah, we started in some questions before we got through all the reports, but that's okay. Yeah. So maybe we should hear any comments from Stacy, and then we can continue our discussion.
Yeah, we actually didn't have any outstanding comments in our review letter. We recommended approval, and we did review all the stormwater management items, and they satisfied our requirements so far. Jared was correct on the fence rule that it's not required unless the slope exceeds a certain amount per county standards. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions you guys have.
Doug, did you have any, Carlisle Wortman, have any other?
No, this is a pretty clean review, and the applicant's right, we've been working with them, you know, on and off for the last several months. And at this time, you know, other than a very minor landscape legend issue with actual counts, which is very minor, can be addressed before this goes on to the township board, we have no, we have no issues. The only thing we'd like to see before this starts construction is a, because that outlot's going to be a separate parcel, the applicant's going to need an easement on that drive to get back to their facility. And so that will have to occur, we'd like to see that before they start construction, that easement's in place. But other than that, you can see from our review that the applicant's done a very nice job of meeting the zoning standards as well as the Jackson Road overlay standards and the landscape standards. So we have, aside what I just mentioned, we have no further review, and we would recommend approval of the site plan.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? I, I have a couple. I just, I know I commented last time that a warehouse is just perfect for solar. So I just want to, you know, reiterate that, and if you could at least, you know, attend to the structure, because I know there's an example of the Antwerp District Library having a warehouse, and there were, you know, part of it is, they don't think that the roof can support the solar that they want to put on it. So just sort of thinking, you know, future-proofing it a little bit. And then, I know you have sort of distinct operating hours and to pay attention to the lighting and make sure that you can dim it or even turn it off if it's not, if it's not needed during hours that you're not fully operating. Those aren't, we can't do regulations like that, but that would be, especially being adjacent to a residential area, especially, you know, in the winter time when light does grow. We do have, you know, we don't have the, we have a reasonable lighting ordinance that keeps it directed downward and shielded, but just having it dimmed or off is great. Commissioner Hyde, you had some, a couple other?
Perhaps I missed it, but is there a plan to remove the existing driveway approach and the cut into the road so that that would be cleaned up and just become outlawed? Perhaps I missed it, it's in the plan, but in all the drawings it shows up, is that a requirement that we, since they're going to abandon the one entrance and put in a new one? So to the applicant, is that existing driveway?
Correct. I believe, and Jared can chime in on this, I believe when we spoke with the road commission, they asked us to move the drive over from its current existing position over to the west side of the property, simply because of the stoplight situation as it is at that location, and they viewed it as the best possible location for having our driveway.
I think the new location is good, but if the old approach and driveway will all be removed?
Yes, all of that will be fully removed.
Okay, I didn't see it in the drawing, and I'm sure it's there, but that's about all.
And Jan, just to let you know, I did have a meeting with the, with, I'm drawing a blank on your solar panel guy, and we, we have taken that into account for the structure, and it would be no additional loading. So in the future, if Ryan deems it something that we want to, or he can do financially, then it's planned for, and it's ready, ready to go for that.
Thank you very much.
One thought that just came up, I think, from Commissioner Hyde, that since this is an outlot, who's responsible for cleaning the sidewalks along Jackson? Who's going to be taking the maintenance of the sidewalk?
Technically, the, it would be the owner of that lot, whoever that owner is, whether it's vacant or not. If, if they, and currently, you know, if it stays in the ownership of these folks, they'll, they'll be responsible until it changes hands.
Okay.
Because, you know, we have, we have, it's not uncommon to have a vacant lot on Jackson, and occasionally they don't show their snow, and we, we'll send a violation notice to whoever's on the property roll on that piece of property.
Commissioner Hyde.
These are niggling little things. I noticed on the property, on the drawings it shows up too, that there are overhead power lines that go right across where the outlot is, and it will, it crosses the proposed building that would be put in the outlot, should it go in according to this tentative plan.
So if I could, if I could jump in on that, I can click that up for you. So with the Woodview, adjacent Woodview Commons development, as I'm sure you're aware, the, the plan is for the overhead power lines to be rerouted along the front of the property underground. We're going to continue that, that underground relocation across the front of our property. And then, because it is an intercepting line at our, our west property line, we'll have to place a power pole up by the right of way on our west property line and go overhead down to where that, that overhead line currently intercepts our west property line, to maintain that going west with the adjacent properties there. So it'll be underground across our front edge, and then we'll have an overhead span to get back to an existing overhead location. So that'll be removed from within the development area entirely.
I like hearing that you're doing that. I didn't see that appear in any of the plans.
Yeah, you, it is not reflected in the site plans. That'll be addressed in the, in the engineering as we've worked through that with DTE.
Okay.
And we've already.
Would you comment?
We've already had conversations with DTE on that, and we're currently, our electrical engineer and Jared are kind of spearheading that. So we'll have, that information will be reflected in the final engineering drawings.
Mm-hmm.
That's excellent. I didn't see it in the Woodview comments, plans, but again.
That may have been a detailed engineering issue that comes after planning commission. I don't know.
All right. Other items, comments? Entertaining emotions? Commissioner Hyde.
With regard to site plan 21020 EWF Solutions, based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that site plan 21020 EWF Solutions meets the criteria for site plan approval, pursuant to section 36180 of the zoning ordinance, and recommends approval. This is based upon, well, there's no conditions.
Do we want to just, you know, and just, if there weren't any big concerns noted in either, so?
There weren't any, and there's just all these little things that are being covered by the applicant?
All right, then we can make it short. Any, is there support? Support from Commissioner Moore? Any further comments? Then I'll call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharma.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang, yes. Commissioner Culberson.
Yes.
Jared.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, move on to, reports and commission activity. OHM.
We, we have nothing to report tonight.
Carlisle Wortman, welcome back.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Chair report. I just want to say that the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has worked with the county so that they're going to be hosting a specifically CIO township virtual meeting around Resilient Washtenaw, and we're collaborating on the agenda together so that the Environmental Sustainability Task Force working groups are going to talk a little bit about what they've been researching and some sort of goals or recommendations that they're discussing, and to try and get feedback. And so this is an excellent opportunity, you know, to learn a little bit about Resilient Washtenaw and also get feedback on some of the things that the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has. And that's going to be a virtual meeting. We're going to post it on the website, and it'll, it's going to be March 15th from 7:00 to 8:30. And the other thing I ask of planning commission members is get me there, and two, you try and get it out to any kind of network that you have so that we can get more residents. There was a, a listening session for all of District 1 that Resilient Washtenaw put on, and I think we had, I, I think we had maybe less than a dozen CIO residents on that. So, you know, this is kind of the first opportunity to have kind of a discussion around climate action and resilience and try and figure out where people are. They also have hosted a, a website that has, it's resilientwashtenaw.org, and it has a kind of interesting mapping exercise where people can put on a map, it could be an asset, they could make a comment. And, and so you can start almost like a little community mapping dialogue, and then, and that's on that website. So that's a great opportunity for us to try and get more, more CIO township residents involved in thinking about kind of action, us knowing, you know, what people consider assets in the county, what are, you know, some vulnerabilities that we have, what they would be looking for in kind of a climate action plan. So, I think it hopefully would be a good opportunity to start that conversation. And then, the other thing is, we did get a student team, very capable, sees master students, and they will be joining the task force working groups a little bit. And then we'll get them more, if you will, full-time for our master's project in the fall, and they're going to be putting together like a community engagement plan around the, the climate action plan and so forth. So, you know, we're looking forward to continuing to have that, more of a, a dialogue and conversations about the different areas. So keep that, I'm looking forward to that. I did also want to remind planning commission members that each year in our kind of bylaws, it says, yeah, bylaws, it talks about, you know, doing some sort of continuing education. And so wanted to bring up... you know, doing some sort of continuing education. And so, um, wanted to bring up, um, one, there are, um, you know, the, um, Michigan, um, Association for Planners, it's planningmichigan.org. They have some, um, courses and so forth. And then, um, the MSU Extension, uh, has a whole series that you can do on your own. That's called, um, uh, Citizen Planner.
Very, very difficult. It's not impossible to sign up.
Sign up for that. We'll have to, we'll have to figure out how to do that.
I tried and.
Well, we'll, I want to go back and yeah, maybe we can call them and say, how do we do this? Um.
Are these free?
Um, no, but, uh, we have a budget, um, to be able to do that, that your continuing education kind of things. So and then, um, the other thing we could do if we wanted to have a, an educational workshop session, we can also do that. Um, the other, um, uh, kind of piece is I have asked in the upcoming budget to update our resource library. Um, there are some, um, additions of multiple planning, um, and there's an introduction for planning commission members and some other things that we should have. So as members come on or, you know, we can, um, circulate those.
Digital library?
Well, you know, I don't think, I think they're hard copies that you give, yeah, but we could probably scan them and make them available to commissioners or something. But yeah, they're not, they should be, right? Um, anyway, um, let's see. And then there's a masters, a beginning, um, uh, there's a monthly session that you can sign up for too, that is, um, kind of a specialty, um, uh, things on the follow-up to the Citizen, uh, Planning Series. So there's one, I caught a solar zoning, um, okay, there are a couple of other ones in there and they're twenty dollars each and they're virtual. So that would be another option for people, um, to look at. And those are on the, um, Michigan Extension. So I would just encourage everyone to kind of find one that they want to do or the series, um, and we're going to figure out how to, how to register for the Citizen Planner thing.
Well, I thought it might, maybe it would be easier if I just signed up and be reimbursed, reimbursed.
We can do that.
Um, but it really didn't come down, I didn't get anywhere because, um, the system was so onerous. Yeah, I spent a couple of hours trying to do it and it just, I had to download an app and a whole bunch of stuff, but I'm open to trying again.
Good. Maybe we could, we could write the, the directions in a more specific way, right? Okay. Um, so, and if anyone else runs into something, I know, you know, Chris, you may have, you know, run into some things in, in the emails that you get and so forth, so.
Uh, I'll definitely put it under the, the city will pay for it, not the town. So the city can take care of it. We'll take it out of the city's budget.
I want to get it out of there.
All right. So that's just a reminder because I think it's important that, you know, we, and then if you do do a seminar or something like that, um, you know, I'd, I'd be, you know, if you would summarize it or, you know, do something, uh, to share with everyone else, I think that would be, that would be great. Okay.
Um, I have a question about your Sustainability Task Force.
Yeah.
So do you, I know there's a lot to accomplish in that topic, so I won't be put off if the answer's no, but I wonder if you guys ever talk about the the economic growth, but the natural resources can't keep track with the economic growth in different communities. I know that's a little beyond what many people are talking about when we're talking about sustainability, but, um, I wonder if anything of that, of that nature comes up in your meetings.
And what, you know, if, if not directly, uh, uh, you know, that's sort of the whole thing is can your, that ecosystem continue to support growth. But one thing that did come up is we had a great, Brian Weiner of, um, Recycle, I don't know if it's still called Recycle Ann Arbor, but, um, they, they're the ones that bought Calvert's on Jackson Road and they have, um, plans to do a, you know, a whole kind of development, I guess, of, um, the circular economy so that they can, um, they're looking for people who are interested in using the stuff that gets dumped off and at the, the C and D, being able to do a better job because right now it's like fifteen percent that they divert and then developing, um, businesses that could actually then use and recycle, recycle and upcycle or whatever, um, the materials that they bring in. You know, developing, and there are quite a few grants right now with next cycle through the state that are trying to encourage those businesses to come in. So in that case, it's, you know, business growth, um, it's not, um, necessarily, um, you know, development growth if you're talking about like, you know, number of people and, and all that versus the, the resources. But I think there, there's been definitely conversation about where you focus the development and, um, setting more of a land preservation goal. Because right now, you know, you have, you talk about land preservation, but there isn't a, like a statistical goal of how much property and we have a map of priorities, but we don't have, what does that mean if we want to achieve a thirty percent cycle?
Right. It's very vague, similar to our master plan. I mean, we hear numerous residents come and speak to us and I think this is an issue in our community about the rural, maintaining the rural nature versus massive development. This is coming up multiple times and, um, it's a difficult thing for the planning commission because we don't control, um, in the, in the, in its entirety, people's ability to develop property that they own. So, um, um, sometimes it appears that we're not listening, but, um, we only have, in the planning commission, we only have so many tools or so much authority to do that. But I do think it's a relevant issue.
Yeah. And I think one of the things that the, that, um, the Board of Trustees is working on right now that was identified as an issue with the land preservation piece. And most of the paces that come before us for development, I shouldn't say most of them, but many of them, the land preservation folks have already tried to approach the landowners and the landowners have declined. So what, what, one of the things that they're trying to do is sometimes it's a timing thing. And so being able to, um, buy, preserve and then sell, um, the property is something that the Board of Trustees is working on, uh, a way of doing that. So that would allow them to, you know, if there's a, a developer there, you know, you don't have to wait two years to find out if, you know, your land will be preserved and you will get, you know, um, uh, compensated for the development rights. So it's, it's a faster process to be able to, to be more, um, not have to be reacting all the time.
Right. And I think that's where, I feel that's where we're at all the time. And I wonder if you've had an opportunity to speak to the board of trustees about, because everything emanates from them, we don't create policy as a part of this commission. So I wonder if you have a understanding of, is the board working on or thinking about or and there are many, many things to deal with, their to-do list. Are they thinking about, um, what kind of policy in terms of development that, that we're looking for?
Well, I, I think the planning commission does through its ordinances, through the master. Now, the master plan is meant to be very general, um, and, and deal things in a general way, but our ordinances are meant to be, and be more, much more specific. And then I think what the, the task force is trying to do is saying, if we really want to accomplish some of these goals, we need to have something that we can measure against. So it isn't just, okay, let's preserve, you know, all the land that we can or how much of the land or whatever it is. Well, what's, what's possible, what's reasonable, how much funding will it take to do that? You know, there'll be another millage i- if we want to continue that preservation. Um, so I think that it, 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 it will serve, um, as, um, if you have things that you can measure, then you can measure your progress, which is a little different than a planning situation where we're, we have general goals and we look at developments with those goals, but these would be, um, you know, more measurable, if you will, that where we really want X amount of agricultural land preserved and identified. We've done a pretty good job of identifying, um, some of the other, um, methods, but put them together in a way of a easier to understand, I think.
Yeah. And I, and, and not only that, to be able to communicate with the residents of SIO Township, because I think there's a, my personal opinion is that there's a lack of communication on that level. Instead of project by project where people show up and they react to something that's in many ways and many times is beyond our ability to stop. Um, and, uh, so, um, you know, one of the common themes, if you will, is this conflict between development and rural that's going on. This is coming up over and over again on many projects and you guys hear it as well. Um, and I don't have, as a planning commissioner, I do not know what the township's policy is and I don't know what the, um, I mean, we just redid our master plan to allow for this heritage project and this Sloan project to happen. And unfortunately I came along on the ma, on the planning commission after those efforts started. Um, and yet I don't see, I've been on the planning commission for a year now and I don't see any continuity of thought or purpose, continuity and purpose where we're, where we're going as a, as a township in this area, you know, what. It's, it's piecemeal, project by project, so.
I'd be happy to do a workshop about the master plan because I think a lot of what Commissioner Moore is talking about is contained in our current newly adopted unanimously approved master plan. I mean, that is the policy, land use policy document for SIO Township. It's the only land use policy document that we have. Township Board allowed the planning commission to approve it. So it's a planning commission document that lays out the land use policy for SIO Township. And, uh, I would be happy to have a workshop to talk about that. If there's questions about, you know, continuity, because I think it is, I think there is a continuity. I think there is.
I'm happy to learn about it.
Yeah, I think there is a plan. I think there is a, there's a reason that it, that, that actually goes back over twenty years and that plan has been realized over twenty years.
I would be excited to hear, to be part of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be part of that.
So for instance, I mean, well, I don't want to think of meetings, but it would, sometimes I find out things, um, after met, after our vote or whatever, about some of the history. And the suburban dealership is a good example of that in terms of not having those go beyond further west and all that stuff, but, um, so I, I, yeah, I'd like to, to know a little bit more about the history.
And if we make it, we can make it a recorded one. And I mean, it can be a, you know, a, a kind of a, you know, educational piece too for people who, you know, miss, you know, um, because everything was virtual at that point. So then that would help document it. So we'll, maybe we can.
Yeah, you and I should talk and we'll put it on like a discussion item or something like that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so the, that is, I did not, I, I heard, um, Commissioner Carto is back in town, um, but I, I didn't get a specific update on the, on the Board of Trustees. Um, the zoning Board of Appeals has not met, DDA, um, we do need a rep and I'm hoping the, um, in the search for filling the planning commission is kind of on hold until they settle the trustees, um, the trustee vacancy. So we're just kind of waiting a little bit on that. And, um, Commissioner Sharma, Road Commission Advisory?
Uh, I would have updates.
Okay. Um, COA, we, we have our list.
We have our list. I was on vacation last week, so I wasn't, I was kind of waiting to get back into it, but I, I will contact or between Chris or I will set up a meeting. We should, this week we should talk Chris.
Okay. Cause I think, um, Commissioner Moore's on that.
Still on that?
Yeah, you're still on that. And Commissioner Chang, because I think, and then the third one, I think was, um, was, uh, Commissioner Holland. So I think you're down to two. So hopefully that still works. Uh, Parks and Rec and why don't you do, you know, for watershed council?
So Parks and Recreation, um, our last meeting, we went through the budget for 2022 and we've also been, you know, in setting our priorities to put before the, the Board of Trustees and we made recommendations for the Parks, uh, the Parks Director position to put before them and we'll see how it develops from there.
And?
So we're making plans for where we're going to be focused on coming up this, this year. We opened up, uh, new preserves last year and we're gonna work on what we're going to be able to open up this next year.
Can I ask, are you working on, on, on creating playgrounds and?
Uh, we do not have that in development right now. I know there's discussions about where we would have that, um, but no, it's not anything in the near future. So we're not working directly on that. I know there's been some discussion about Township Hall Park, but that is not one we're working on at this point. So the answer is no, these are more preserves than, and, and the parks aspect of it would be, um, not playgrounds so much as, um, seating areas, shelters, um, adjacent to walkways and, and the pathways. But we would take suggestions. So if that was one.
No, I'm not trying to suggest anything. I think I heard something about that being discussed at the, at the Board of Trustees level and, you know, this kind of infrastructure, are we gonna, are we gonna maybe sustain that kind of infrastructure?
Well, if we.
And I wonder why people are moving out into the country and to bring the parks from Ann Arbor out to SIO Township. I'm just having a hard time reconciling.
Kind of park.
Okay.
At this point in time, we're not developing that kind of park. Whether we get there in the future, we'll see. But it would have to be maintained. You're absolutely right.
For sure. You'd have to maintain.
You remember watershed?
We have not had any meetings on that. Um, we do have a discussion point that we wanted to make with them about the, uh, upcoming, oh, where are my notes here? And I wasn't, I, I believe either I was going to contact them about the, um, the permit for the, um.
Right. And I did, we do have a contact there. It's Rick Lawson and it reminds me that, um, they said they were, uh, they were interested in responding. They had a staff member working on it, but we haven't, I don't, we haven't received any communications. So.
Okay. And, and remind me, that was for the, um, community?
That was nice of Columbus and then any other, you know, community, um, um, wells and it, well, no, community septic.
Septic system.
Septic systems, yeah, yeah. And so, um, that's, they've, uh, Rick Lawson seems to be the person that they have working on those things because there are issues, you know, throughout the, the watershed.
So they're aware of the upcoming, um, meeting that's going to be held with you though? Is that what it was?
Yes, I told them about that and yes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Let's see. Okay.
Let's go over to Tam.
Yeah, Tam.
Tam, we did meet earlier this month. Uh, we continue to discuss, you know, the, the Zebra, uh, pathway project to connect to the border or the border and I, I, I can't give you the numbers, but, uh, there's a lot of budgeting going on for the upcoming phases. So that's kind of exciting. We also talked about some. We also talked about some sidewalks along Scioto Ridge, which is on the east portion, Scioto Church Road, Scioto Ridge, over by the uplands, possible sidewalks there and the budgeting. So, discussing still a lot of budget items at this time.
Sounds familiar.
Any other activity or reports that want, people want to? Okay. Then we'll move to approve of the 124 discourse.
So, we're going only minutes? Is every?
Yeah. That's what, yeah. I call that discourse. I was downloading. I always separate them out like, what? How many, how many pages were those minutes?
I think you have one correction I wanted to make. It was, I believe it was page 11. Hold on. I'm remembering page 11 of the minutes. And if it was a transcription, which I think I heard that this may have been, I can see how that might have been affected by the masks. The last, second to last paragraph talks about Bell Creek. And I believe that that's Mill Creek. So, if that could be corrected, there's two separate references to it.
What page are you on?
Well, it's page 68 of the, of the packet. It's page 11 of the minutes.
16 of the packet, right?
68, yeah.
68.
That's the packet.
And it just refers to, you know, I was talking about Mill Creek. And it could have been pronunciation and got picked up wrong.
Yeah. But it should be Mill Creek.
Right. There's Mill Creek referred to above that. And that was the discussion point.
And then I think your name correction?
Yep. There's several errors on how they spelled my name. I printed out the minutes, so I'm taking track. We'll turn them into color work. They can take a look at the spellings.
Okay.
It wasn't us. Other than that, I thought they were really detailed. Personally, I find this to be quite a refreshing change than just the cursory ones. So, if this wasn't any more work, I love it.
It's, no, it, there's a cost that comes with it.
So, that'll have to be decided whether it's worth it. But I like this.
Any other work for those minutes? I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn?
No.
Accept the minutes. Oh.
Yeah. Accept the minutes as corrected.
I move to correct, to approve the minutes as corrected, as noted here.
Is there support? Support from Commissioner Sharma? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And then we have the minutes of the 214 meeting, which there was no meeting because it was originally calendared. We record that. So, I'll just, we should probably formally approve the, that we did not have a meeting
So, we are actually going to keep minutes for the canceled meeting?
For the canceled meeting?
In the record?
I don't know what.
Okay.
It's just a record that it was canceled, that there was no meeting.
I would move to accept the canceled meeting minutes.
There's support? Okay. Support from Commissioner Sharma? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Then those minutes are approved. All right. Anything else that, yes?
I know we don't have a place for public comment at the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to let you, make you aware, as if someone was in the audience. Rob and Joe Pattinson had someone from that, that computer address as their hand. So, it's up to you whether you'd like to listen to them or not.
I'm okay.
Okay. All right. Open it up for public comment.
Rob and Joe Pattinson, you had your hand up. I think you have, you have the floor if you'd like to make some closing comments.
Thank you very much, Doug. And thank you, Jen, for letting us go forward. First things first, we missed the first nine and a half minutes of tonight's meeting. And because it was the ceiling microphone that was muted instead of Zoom, I don't believe Granicus would have picked up the recording either. So, you'll have to, and I appreciate you repeating the public comment. So, it looks like about the first seven minutes of tonight's meeting, you'll have to record carefully in the minutes so that you have a record of what happened. And then the, the Governance Academy that Jessica Flintoff put together on the Scioto Township website has several video classes associated with planning and planning commission issues that might be helpful in your continuing education program as well. And lastly, the chat function is disabled on this particular meeting. And tonight's meeting is an example of how that can be dangerous. I would recommend, there is a function on Zoom where the chat function will function for the host and the panelists, but not for the entire audience. And that's sort of the bare minimum chat. I would recommend reinstating that amount of chat so that when we have technical issues, we can make the group aware of what's happening. Thank you so much for letting us speak at the end of the meeting.
Good suggestion. Thank you. I appreciate that. Because I noticed, I didn't, I don't really look at my emails, but I saw that, I also got an email from somebody.
Me too. But I didn't notice.
Yeah. But, yeah, you don't have those up.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but in the beginning of the meeting, we had the public comments because we didn't have anything else besides adopting the agenda.
I will, just for the record, one thing that we did, we just, we did roll call because I don't think the recording will pick anything up. We called the meeting to order. We did the typical reading of, you know, how to participate in, in public comment and so forth. We adopted the agenda as submitted. And then we did note the one communication and correspondence, which was the withdrawal of the source facility PUD that was, that had been tabled. So, and then there were no presentations and we moved into public comment. And we had people who had commented before we were live or record. And I think record was pressed somewhere in there, but it may not have, I don't know what it picked up. So, that is sort of a summary of the several minutes at the beginning that may not have been documented.
I move to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Is there support? Support from Commissioner Hyde? All those in favor, you know, we should probably, we can just do, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And I guess I should check with you guys. It's okay to, I'm doing a, a roll call for.
Recording stopped.
The commissioners, you know, the.